Okay, let me, let me uh. Okay, it is uh six thirty-one, we're gonna bring this meeting to order, special session, call order if you would uh. Take a roll call.
Kevin Patterson.
Leon Nine.
Amber Bree.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
David O'Shea for every occasion.
Dear heavenly father, as we meet tonight, we ask that you grant us wisdom and knowledge, please instill in us your strength and perseverance to guide us as we strive to make good decisions for our city. We pray that you will use us to cultivate a city of which you dream of and where everyone flourishes. Father, we remember those that are with you in heaven and say thank you to those brave souls that gave their lives to our country to keep us free. We ask that you bless our citizens and those that contribute to our city and watch over each of us as we go about our daily lives. Thank you for your grace, mercy, and peace. We ask these things in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
May the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to announcements, do we have any announcements? I've got one, I've just been informed we're having a Calvin Trevor's. Music festival.
Amber.
Uh, June the twenty-sixth, I think it was, they uh, just because of scheduling and, and it taking more time, uh, really putting a, a good program together. They have uh pushed that out till July of next year, July of twenty twenty-two. Well, they just need more time to make it, they wanna make sure it's a, a, a great event, lots of people, music and everything. They just felt it'd be better, just going, just pushing on off, so uh, that's all I've got, y'all have anything?
I don't know, have you talked to David DeWolff about the flag?
Yes, I did, and that'll be, uh, matter of fact, speaking of that, I had a conversation with David DeWolff, he is the commander of the American Legion. He's been speaking with uh, the other two VSOs, VFW and MBS, and uh, uh, he, I guess he's new to the position. They are mending, I guess there's been in the past, they haven't really worked together, now they're mending fences and uh, and putting a plan together so they can work more cohesive with each other. And also, what can they do to help the city out? Uh, they're gonna do a, um, flag day, June the fourteenth. Uh, they're gonna be replacing the flags and have a little ceremony there, I don't know what time yet, but they'll, we'll get that out, and uh, I'll get that out in the next, six P M, okay?
So you know that there's requirement there to dig a hole.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's to uh, in order to destroy or burn the flags in accordance with the, the, the flag etiquette that's been laid out by Congress, I believe. Uh, June the fourteenth.
June the fourteenth, six P M. What have all three of the service clubs?
The signs, right, I got you F in it, right, I've not seen you, you from the street.
Chris, you're gonna be all.
Yeah, so you'll have all three of the service clubs, the fire department will be out there, so that's, we'll bring it up.
The next city council will have time, so.
Matter of fact, he wants to come up to city council, um, and, and uh. Just have a little, a short presentation, and kind of what their goals are and everything like that, I, I explained to him that, uh, I can put it in the agenda, we can discuss it, have, you know, a, a discussion. Or he could come to the meeting that, and during citizens' input, but we wouldn't be able to converse about it, so he decided we'd just set it up for the next uh, city council meeting, which will be June the eighth. Uh, okay, moving on.
Nice one, nice one.
Oh, you know?
Was the chili cook-off Saturday and Sunday that they're asking for, any volunteers to come down?
What time?
Uh, noon on Saturday, eleven-thirty on Sunday.
If I can handle it, I'll be there. I'll do what I can.
I think that's more of that relationship building is one of the reasons they requested, so.
Yeah.
They just like to see anybody from the city.
Like for me, I deal with gurds, so you know, it's, it's up and down.
Where are they doing it at?
Allegiance.
American Legion.
And I, I'm trying to get Sunday. But I'm a contact.
That's uh.
Because you sent me that thing, it says contact.
Yeah, there's a contact name, if y'all want me to, I'll email you the fire.
That's. I know I can't do it Saturday, Saturday. Of course, I'm praying.
Don't say that.
It said noon on Saturday, I'm not sitting here texting or emailing someone, by the way, making no.
I'll go ahead and send you everybody that.
Okay.
So before we, Chris, you will make sure that you and I align well on the whole, I wanna make sure that's done, like, earlier that day or whatever. We need to figure out where we want to put that, where we wanna do that, and either we can do it public works, or, or I can go do it myself.
I'll set up a meeting between David, myself, and you down there.
That's perfect. And in that way, either, either I'll do it myself, or uh, I'll make sure the public works, you head that, anyway.
Okay, um, I'm gonna get one of those, do you have anything else? Uh, I do wanna go ahead and let everybody know, um, next Thursday will be Ian's last day of Louis.
Trader, trader.
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll figure things out, we'll, we'll, somehow we'll get by, but anyway, um, that's all I've got, announcements, we have any citizens' input related to agenda items, anybody? Okay, all right, moving on, and item number six is a discussion and or take action regarding the request by Terry Moore, agent for Westland LLC for the replat. Of their property known as the Cloisters located in two hundred and Maze Lane in the city of West Torquay, currently zone multi-family used. And to include an additional four lots to the south of the same, uh, Terry appears front and center. He has got a, a blow-up of the uh, of the, the master plat. Uh, I have a copy of this, I don't know if you guys have, have seen this yet or not, Terry, if you would, if you would go ahead and kinda give the other members a brief uh, discussion or an outline of uh, what your goals were.
Well, thank, thank you guys very much for seeing us today, we really appreciate you having such a session for us, it means a lot to us, and this is Randy Warren, John Helms, and they're all part of the team, and we have that here, of course, a lot more guys, but this is some of them, and we do appreciate it. Well, the, we, as you know, we've, we're building these, we built these dispatch here, we're, we're under construction with another batch of three buildings next door to it. And then they should hopefully be ready in about, after two months, and these, these units here have already sold, so these are all gone, these will be for sale. And uh, this is with it, with all that said, we're like, we better get back on the stick and start getting ready for phase three, so that's why we're bringing on phase three. This, this does not reflect, this is not phase three, just, just a part of it, so there's phase four on the backside of it. But phase three is gonna be adjacent to the existing, new ones that we're under construction with right now, we'll be, we're planning on build two buildings next door to them, to carry that concept all the way down. And then we'll bring in these, this multifamily, our apartment homes, you know, behind them, and so we're gonna be bringing another entrance into the property, which will come in, come up, turn around, and then turn, turn through the, the backside apartments. It comes back in and ties into the road we already have there, and when that's, this, this part of the property will be, will be looted, you know, so we, our water's all there, sewage all there, et cetera, et cetera. So the buildings that we're wanting to build are, it would be this part of the building, and this part of the building will be twenty-four units total, twelve units each quarter. And so we just wanna have a test of water now, we'll keep on going with it, but when we be on it, with the next phases, what have you, for the next batch of units will be on this backside here, and these will be about, about thirty units, maybe a little more, but these will be four-story units. And we're planning on putting on the top floor, this, these units that, that carry the backside, uh, a, a large balconies, where we have, we think like, go see the lake, you know, so it'll be able to offer that view. And I'll, 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 I'll also offer the view of the top of Dollar General. Rooftop, you know?
So we got that discussion, Randy or you, or wherever y'all were gonna drone it, and uh, go four stories up.
We wanted to see the drone view from a fourth floor banner to the balcony to make sure that it's gonna be, you know, what we are gonna see.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, what will we see if we do four?
Exactly, yeah.
So we'll, we'll have an elevator, and, and, and what's, like, called earlier today, it will officially be the skyscraper of West Walkin', so we will plan on getting a marker, put it on that, so, but we, we're trying. C and, what is that, C and B are both gonna be four stories, that's what we played on there, right?
C, C and B or C and G?
C and G.
Okay.
Will those units all be sprinkled, that's all we call.
All the buildings will be, all of the buildings, all of them will be sprinkled.
That's the law. Yeah, that, that's, that's the law, that's.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, we've done phase one, phase two, phase three is actually A, right? But what you're looking at right now to, to be.
This is basically like a phase three and four, but we're, but phase three is like here and, and here. We'll be doing that building here, and then one of these two things across the group of it.
So what is A?
We see.
You're gonna, I see A next to phase one.
Yeah, the other two single-story houses, oh, these are duplexes, yeah.
Right, I guess, I guess I was understanding in the beginning of the conversation, you were saying that was what y'all were ready to build next.
Yeah, we are gonna build this next.
Okay, okay.
So there'll be phase three then?
This will be part of phase three, phase three will, phase three will include duplexes, this, this uh, amenity package here, and then two of these apartment buildings.
Okay, either, either, either or, you're not sure which ones that.
Well, we will be doing this. We're gonna be doing this one, you're right. Now, the, with the amenity package that we're gonna be putting out here, I think it's nuts, and matter of fact, it's, it's just the standards that everybody else in, in, in the United States, but we'll be bringing in, this is a park. All right, so it's pretty substantial park, but it's, it's circular, and it has, it's lined with food trucks. You know, we have like a gravel road back in here, so if there's function going on, we've been through trucks in, jump, jump that curb and line around that, on that gravel drive. You'll have to service these, this little park setting right here, in addition to that, across the street, it's gonna be a clubhouse, you know, spa, community room, et cetera, anything you wanna call it. You know, the gym offices, et cetera, and then will also be a nice swimming pool back behind it. And then in addition to that, this area over here is called, called the lawn, L A W N, and what that is, is be short, short, shortcut grass, kind of grass ready ones put out there, and that's personal joke. And so uh, uh, but here, what the intent of this is to put a, a large screen on the side of the building here, we'll have outdoor movies here, you know, for picnics, for families, et cetera, you know, and we're just, we'd be about showing, you know, the monstering gorillas, I would mean some, some movie. And then, then in addition to that, we'll have in the, there's, there's dog parks and things like that, there's a trail, comes out through here, walking trail, uh, so it's basically bringing in the packages that everybody else does.
So this may be an afterthought, and then we've had many discussions about this uh, over the month. On the entrance to, the first entrance on Catfish Trail, is that Catfish Trail?
Lane.
And I'm just thinking, it's a, it's an afterthought, and I had a forethought, as close as those, those first two buildings are, and, 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 and what you've got in the construction now on both the left and the right side of Catfish Trail. As small as they are, and what's a little room of parking and everything we got. I'm foreseeing that could be a problem going from the, the, from Maze Lane to back to uh, buildings B, is it B?
Yeah, B, B C.
Yeah, B and C, so, and I say this is an afterthought, I can foresee if somebody's having a party or whatever, and he, he wanna base one or base two, that there might be a little issue there, because it's not that wide a road. It's not that long of a road, and neither is Perch Drive, so we're limited on, on parking and things, and like I said, it's just a thought that I had, that, that could, it could be a problem in, in the future, but I just wanna bounce it off everybody else. Is everybody, you know what I'm talking about?
I see another road on the other side of A, that looks like kind of a more of a, still more of a, a more substantial road, it's on, it's to the right, yes, that.
Yeah, it's, it's the same as this drive here, and, and all this, all these drives are fire lanes, so they're twenty-four feet wide.
Okay.
I mean, these are, these park is, well, this is from back to curb, back to curb is sixty feet, which allows you, as you know, eighteen-foot park, twenty-four-foot fire lane, nineteen-foot park, and then you guys two-foot hangover with curb.
I think the optical illusion of what you're talking about is Catfish Lane is, is wide, and then this next additional, the, this future road is in gray, so I think it creates an optical illusion there. The colors, I think the colors on this end.
It may be, well, you know, we, we've got some, or we don't, you've got so much equipment in there working on phase two and all that, that when I drive by, and my perception is, is that, this is little to no room in there, but you've got everything in there also, a lot of that, uh, that, uh. Your spotlight, cameras, other equipment, yeah, you got all kinds of stuff in there, so that, that could be taken away from my, my true perspective.
I was saying, you know, all that, all this stuff, get ready to be pulled out of there, put on the other side, and so I'm like, pretty quick.
Okay.
So, we're gonna build phase three, which is gonna be the duplexes and two, two of the apartments.
And the storage units back in the back, and then the uh, then the, the big amenities.
So, so the amenities will be part of phase three.
Yes.
And did you, on this, right here on the storage units back to the back, and guys, just so we've got, we're saying, to me, we're, it's the side, because I'm so used to Maze Lane. And I, I'm calling it the front, but I know it's not the main entrance of Maze Lane, uh, but these storage units, it, are you figuring in the five-foot setback, I believe is the, is, have you, are you?
Well, I like, I like to move on into the property, bud.
Well, I know, but you still gotta have a five.
I, I got that on here.
Okay, okay, that's why I wanna make sure.
Yeah, and I would love to put a property, see that, you know, this lady back here's gonna get mad at us when we step on her property with respect to the whole of that thing, you know?
Um, where is the water tap? I know that was a big concern.
We have what?
There is water over there, the main tap is.
Uh, what I'm concerned about.
Water tap right here.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as we, we have the city has total access to that at any, at any time.
See, I, I, that's, this drive splits that right in.
Okay, okay, all right, I just wanna make.
What a charge you'd get on that property.
Yeah, yeah, well, the check's in the letter. So, okay, those are the only concerns that I've got, does anybody else have any questions, concerns?
Yeah, since uh, you have any plans to. Help on Maze Lane when you get all the apartments in and all those cars going up and down?
Good question.
There's an echo in here, isn't there?
There is.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on, come on, you take it out of my mind, I was just gonna say, we've gotta do something amazing.
Thirty minutes ago.
I mean, obviously, there's a lot of traffic.
Yeah, yeah, well, the thing is, what, like I told them as well, is that the real issue, the man, the culprit, is out here Dollar General. I mean, that's not the big boys coming in and out of that thing, we, we, our, our concrete trucks will be gone for long, and they've, they've done that, they've done some damage, not, but not like these guys down here. You know, but for us, the, the lane down there, we, we've talked about that several times, you and Randy have talked about it a lot, you know, and first I'm saying, no, we're not gonna kick it. But no, it's uh, it's something we, we want to talk about, I mean, once we get to a certain point, like, I can think, you and I have visited, is that, you know, once we get to the point where we're pouring a mass of concrete back in here, some of this stuff can be, kind of slipped in, you know, and uh, or, or, or come back there, put another topping of asphalt over the top. I know you're gonna say no on that one, but it's better to kick in the rear. But we're willing to talk, you know, the committee right now, I can't admit, but I.
And, and we don't, I don't think we want you to admit, I, I think what we'd like to see, because it would be a benefit to, to not only your, your project, and the city would receive great benefit from it, but, go ahead.
What I don't wanna see, I'm sorry, I'm really good, but it's right down here at Maze Lane and, and two states, I want a street light there. I want one down here, also down here from City Hall right out here at Gulf Drive, and once we, we can get that done, huh? Red, red lights, like, you know, traffic lights, you know?
Now, that, that's gonna, that's never gonna happen, because the city does not have that input.
Well, I understand that, but somewhere we need to start petitioning for that.
I don't know if a petition would get that, um, the only thing that's ever gonna get that is whenever you get people in these units, and then we contact Tech Stock, Tech Stock lays lines on the road, they count cars, and then.
What's been going on out here, they've been counting cars, so he's been counting.
Well, actually, I think, you know.
And the only reason why I'll tell you this, okay, um, I have fifty-two acres on twenty-one oh one, which is just, just north of Quinnon, and twenty-one oh one and Highway thirty-four. There's a school down there, there's all kinds of stuff down there, and there's tons of people live down that road, that road just got a red light, what, a year ago, two years ago? All right, um, and I think there was only about five deaths there.
Oh, so. Well, that's, yeah, they have stopped.
So what I'm telling you is, there's a whole lot that goes into.
No, I, I, I know how it works, I know I've done it before, but, but I'm just saying, if the city wants to say, let's do it, just, just, just wanna, because without those stoplights, you have, you, we need retail out here.
Yeah, right.
And they ain't gonna get no retail unless they stop, and they can't stop at fifty-five miles an hour.
No, you're right.
I, I think there's the, the getting a red light, it has less to do with traffic and more to do with accidents, that's what I've experienced.
Red lights are typically somewhat safety-related.
Because the more accidents you have in that area, the more apt they are to put a light.
Does it strictly on the amount of traffic?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I say.
Safety's what usually promotes it to start being looked at.
If nothing else, I think it would be nice if you just had a turn lane off of two seventy-six, because I've never been hit there many times from both directions, because people swerve into the turn lane to try to avoid people turning onto Maze. It's, and, and we, there was a time when we even tried, we were given a name from somebody that worked for Tech Stock, that we were gonna call, and we presented it to someone here at the city, and it never, they never proceeded it. So if nothing else, if we could get a turn lane, that would be awesome.
But you don't, you do, don't, if you don't, it's kinda like down here, turn off two seventy-six on Maze Lane here, you, you, you get off on that little so-called service road, you know, you know, you get off the side there, you know, and if you don't get off of the road, you won't get run into.
Right.
If he goes backside here, there will side swap, he pulls up on your truck, it's a mad hatch, you know, so what do you do?
Yeah.
So, so back, so back looking.
But, but you sell racial lane would be great, you know?
Yeah, looking at the prize, I mean, I think over time, it would be beneficial to not only your project and the tenants that are gonna be taking, you know, taking those uh, locations over, but the city would reap benefit. So I think as the city and the council, we would like to see something, because obviously, we're not in the construction business, kinda you guys are. Um, somebody needs to come to us with sort of an idea or plan, and, and what you guys would want, I mean, whether it's, it's tax-related, what, what, I mean, how, how's, you know, this is the kind of things that you guys probably.
Well, it would be exactly, and you'll, and you'll be doing that, you know, because he, he's does that, and uh, but you know, that, you know, making, you know, swap this or swap that, something else, something else, or something, you know, whatever. I mean, I think there's some way that we can all could work together as we're, we're going through this process, you know, even if we have to come through here, it's just with phases, you know, phase, move it here, move it here, move it here, whatever it might be, that we can economically make it work.
I'd like to piggyback on both of your, uh, your, your comments or anything, is the fact that today, uh, we, the city, has, has, uh, we've been having a lot of contact with, with Randy and Terry. Uh, the city is more involved, at least from my standpoint, I, I've been more involved in what they're doing, whereas in the past, when we first started, we had these meetings like this, and we would start, and then the city was kinda just left in the dark until you guys came forward. Now, we're kinda in the middle, or a kind of part of the actual planning of some of this stuff, the layouts and things like that, and we didn't have that in the beginning. So I'm, I'm putting that a, a benefit, uh, uh, an animal, so to speak, that y'all have done an excellent job communicating with us, I, I know you have with me, and I try to include everybody, uh, that, that, you know, like their public works and things like that. So there's a, to me, there's a better line of communication and, and transparency between your guys' project and us, and allowing us to, uh, to give some input into these things, and I think that's cr- critical, it's very important, and I think it's gonna work well for us.
And I think it's important, what, as we said before, this part right here, it's, it's a combination of two-story duplexes for rent, since we sold the first phase, those are rental units. The second phase of two-story duplexes are for sale, the third phase is two single-story duplexes for those who don't want up and down, then we have the apartments. We wanna find out at that point what the market wants, okay, do they want duplexes, or do they want more apartments? Would they rather have townhomes, something, but our duplexes or tunnels, or will border Maze Lane, I think is the best, and then inside will be the more multi-family, which will be incorporating the trails, and like a little community. But this community will be developed as the market needs.
And the, the look of it will all be reflected all the way through.
Correct, it's a common theme, yes, but we, we not just coming and throwing a po- a project down in your city and.
Well, it's not, it's always, it's our city too, you know, so that's how we're looking at it, but we're, we're, these all will reflect each other, it'd be like, you know, if, if it's like those deals, it, it's like, uh, in Dallas, all right? In Dallas, there's a really nice, you know, community similar to this over there, i- it's called uh, uh. I mean, what's the name of it over there, it looks like, Garrett lives there. Oh, Village, Village. Okay, everybody, I, I don't know everybody, but luckily we're in the village, dealing down, you know, Village.
Back in the seventies?
Yeah.
I don't see it now.
Yeah.
It's all damn, it comes of it, it is something slim, and it is, yeah, anyway, so uh, uh, so here, if I could down, she said, hey, I live in the village. Oh, you know, that type of thing, well, here, West Walkin', Winland, you know, Emery, all on, 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 where do you live? We live out. You know?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the intent, is making something that is all tied together.
You know, I think it's important to note too, that, you know, I've had some citizens' input on this, you know, over the years about this project, it, it appears that we're, that we're overdeveloping, uh, uh. Sort of a crippled real estate market around here, but with that two seventy-six bypass that's coming in, which is, they're making strides, they're making great progress with that. Uh, things are moving this way, this is just a, a developer that has got in on the ground floor, and we're gonna see a lot more of this around this area, this is not gonna be the first thing we see. And once that bypass opens up, a lot of those people, most people can't afford a lip and rock wall, I mean, those houses are, I think the median price of all, over there is probably four hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred thousand.
Is it six hundred? So they, they may work in Rockwall, which there's a lot of uh, uh, businesses and commerce there, they can't afford to live there, we're only twenty minutes down the road. So it does, you know, I know it seems, the perception of some people, is that, you know, this is, it's out of place, whatever, uh, but we have to think about what's gonna happen in the next five to ten years down the road, not tomorrow or next month, we gotta look five years, ten years.
Well, if you, if, sorry, but if you don't, if you don't do this type, this type of stuff, if you don't pitch it over here, go get to the popport, if you don't do that, you know, you'll look just like this twenty years from now.
Yeah, it'll get left by, yeah, exactly right.
I mean, I mean, when I told you first time, I was, what do you want here?
Yeah.
You know, and so here we are, but.
Well, I just wanna appreciate y'all's, y'all's involvement, I mean, I've been on the phone a lot, a lot of times with Randy, uh, over the years, it's been some time with Terry, but uh, Randy and I have really developed a relationship, and I just wanna let y'all know, I really appreciate it, that's being a part of it.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
On the A, the duplexes, uh, I know phase one.
Phase three.
Right, A, three. When, when is your, when do you expect to start maybe breaking ground on that?
About four weeks.
Yeah, we have to re, we just need after this, we'll, we'll get the surveyors out, but you have to redo that independent upon, and we may call on your guy that you can help us with.
And, and once you do start building the apartments, I, I'm sure this is just a given, you will have onsite management for those, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's with the building, the building with around the pool, that's also the office, that will be the office for the administration, yes, and it's not just the apartments, it's the duplex, because this is an HOA community.
Gotcha.
So everything will be under that.
Well, she asked the start time, do you guys have ballpark completion time for B?
I mean, are we looking? Or is A, I'm sorry, well. Phase three is gonna take twelve, fourteen months, depending upon the freaking weather.
Sure, yeah.
Wow.
Hopefully we get a break on that.
Yeah.
I know you guys probably got it hard with the uh, the, the lumber issue, we, we, at least we've come, it got up to as high as seventeen hundred dollars, a thousand more foot, and uh, the norm, what's normal is about three hundred or so, a thousand more foot. Uh, it's come down, the last time I checked, I think already this week, it's down. Uh, it's come down, the last time I checked, I think already this week, it's down to twelve hundred, and so we're making progress, so, uh, it's important to everybody that issue, about the A project that's going on in town, so, it's important to keep up with, that's kind of a pulse of the business, because.
What will happen is that folks like us, you know, we'll see it coming down, we'll hit to a certain point, then we'll go in and buy everything we can buy. You know, and, uh, I mean, freaking OSB board, which is the jump board, walk us on the roof decks, you know, et cetera. And the other day, when I checked it last week, it's forty-seven dollars a sheet. You know, and I was buying it for forty dollars.
Yeah.
Yes, every much, gee, okay.
That also may have determined our timeline also, because, you know, a lot of builders right now are putting on hope, they cannot price out, what a, the house is gonna be when they finish.
Does anybody else have any other questions, concerns, or input or anything?
Back to the Maze Lane, it would help y'all rent those apartments and sell those condos.
Oh, no, we agree a hundred percent, Maze Lane is.
Get to that part to where you're thinking about doing it, maybe as a city, we can contact Dollar General and get them to kick in something.
Well, you know, we, we also were trying to get Dollar General. They're wants to, they want to, you know, bring in some shrubs and, you know, and block, block them, so, block them off. And, uh, and but that's how, we don't have to pay for it, you know, and, you won't pay for it, go for it, yeah, that was a waste.
No, red, like a red tap for teeny.
That's what, yeah.
That's what you'd go with. They provide a noise, uh, control, side and everything.
And wow.
Yeah, yeah, uh, anything else? The chair, the chair motion?
I think the motion we accept, proposal, I guess that's the way we're looking at this.
I'll second it.
The re-.
I'll second it.
Okay, always a favor.
Kevin Patterson?
Yeah, I'm there.
Can't breathe, brother.
Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous. Okay, um, at this time, it is seven oh three P M. We're on item number seven, we're gonna adjourn to executive session, um, it shouldn't take too long, uh, for us to get through these things, so, uh, we'll be back as soon as we can, so, guys, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, you're welcome, I, I'm the one who wanna hang around.
I'm real sorry.
Yeah, I, it was good to see you again.